Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to board meeting this evening. And we'll go ahead and begin with a roll call. And so Director Larson, are you present?
Yes.
Director Bowler Jack?
Yes.
Director Hoover?
I see you.
Not coming through.
There we go. We can hear you. And then Director Morris. And then student representative Samuel Fia Pito.
Yes, I'm here.
Well, welcome and welcome to our guests. Before we get started, we'll go ahead and as part of our welcome, share a land acknowledgement and courageous conversation, community norms.
We in the Tuck Willa School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and Makoshu people, past and present, and honor with gratitude, the land itself and the Duamish and Makoshu tribes. As a public school district, we have the responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we recognize the Duamish and Makoshu people who have been living and working here since time immobile.
And we, we agree to stay engaged, expect to experience discomfort. We will speak our truth and will spect and accept a lack of closure. And these four agreements come from courageous conversations written by Glenn Singleton, Courageous Conversations about Race: A Field Guide to Achieving Racial Equity in Education.
Thank you, Director Bowler Jack. We'll go ahead and move along to the approval of the agenda. Agenda may get a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and we've approved the agenda for discussion items for the COVID-19 protocols this evening. We'll move along to public comment. So this evening, we will have a public comment opportunity in just a moment and also at the end of the meeting. Do we have the, the free, the protocols sort of what? Somewhere we can pull up?
It's thinking. It's on the public comment section.
I'll go ahead and I'll start riffing here. So each, each individual is able to speak at, at each public comment. So if you want to do one at the beginning, one at the end, or just one at, one at the beginning, whatnot. Please limit your, your comments to about two or three minutes to ensure that we can get as many people as possible to have an opportunity to share. If you want to speak, please use the raise your hand function or write your name and ask to speak in the chat so that we can definitely make sure that you're accounted for and to please clearly state your name, type your name so that we can have that for public record. And we'll go ahead and move along to public comment. Are there any, is there anybody here that would like to do a public comment at the beginning of the meeting? All right. There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. We'll go ahead and move into discussion items. So to frame the conversation, directors had a chance to sort of share key, key elements of what they were hoping to get additional information, make sure that we would address for our district. Let's just go ahead and share, each of us share what it is we want to make sure to accomplish this meeting. And I'll start with Director Bowler Jack.
Thank you. Yes, I would, I would like to hear about all of the updated data or any procedure changes that have been developed since we met last. Also, I would like to have a conversation about athletics as they currently are being held. That's it for me.
Thank you. Director Larson?
Yeah, I think that just, there's been a lot of information that's gone out on the, on the various protocols that we're using and, and ongoing development and then kind of the, what the current thinking is on, on trying to move from remote learning back to in-person learning.
Director Hoover?
Yeah, so hearing, hoping to hear more about what supports were really, sorry, ensuring accountability for contact tracing and including what communications or tools we're going to help to provide for families so that they get contacted sooner, whether that's via a letter or other type of communication. Of course, remote learning supports and hearing what you and your team have discussed around how we're going to ensure that everybody is receiving remote learning supports, not only now, but when we are back in person. And then having some discussion around the CDC and DOH updates, the recent ones that have come through and really ensuring that we are using those as guidance and then ultimately making guidance for ourselves based on what's best for our community and what would make folks feel most safe in schools.
Thank you. Mr. Fia Pito, anything?
Um, I just want to figure out, no, I just want to understand more of what COVID protocols we're going to take when we go back in person. And I want, I was also wondering whether we plan on going back in person next week or are we just going to continue just for like another week or so? And yeah, that's basically it.
Thank you. Director Morris?
I would like some, a little bit of clarification on what our threshold numbers are. And also some guarantees that the quarantine, quarantine specialists and the engagement specialists will be used for that purpose, those purposes only. And I'm concerned about the prospect of going back too soon. It's the end of the semester for students. I understand finals are next week. It seems that would be a little chaotic for them to return before, before finals are over. It's just one more hiccup in the system for them.
Thank you. And in addition to what's already been said, access to the resources that all students need. So technology, online access, a safe place to study and for students that, that we have specialized considerations to think about. So if it's, if it's specialized needs, if it's students who are transporting into other places, childcare issues, things like that. I'm just curious about as a district, how are we supporting those families? And so we'll go ahead and open up the discussion. Dr. Herndon?
Great. Thank you very much. So I did want to follow up on a couple of the items that were on the agenda from last time. I think we've addressed the number three on that item, the daily reporting of student absences and staff absences. I believe we have that up on our COVID website now being updated on a daily basis. So if that information isn't up there, that's where we're going to find that and make sure that's updated consistently. The number four on that, again, this was last week on Friday. So just on those bullet points, we've been following through on the deployment of devices for remote learning. That happened yesterday and continued today for elementary students who did not get the devices they may have had on Tuesday. They could have been absent. There were some absences, so we wanted to make sure they were there. For some students, they were already in quarantine status, so they should have already had some devices. But if they didn't, hopefully they were able to get those, come in and get those. I'll have Mr. Baker speak to some of that deployment a little bit later as I saw the additional questions. I had a community listening session last night, which was very well attended and appreciated a lot of the questions and gave feedback. Have two listening sessions tomorrow, one with staff at 3:30 and then one with during the family night that we have with some other topics as well. And our family liaisons will be present to help translate with those families tomorrow night. Teaching and learning had first year teachers. We had supports for first year teachers because they may not have gone through this process last year. So we want to make sure they had a little bit more support, not having gone through this. And then we did submit some information out, a lot of information out about the deployment of devices and the last bullet point on there is trying to make a determination by Friday. And I said Friday, just because I want to make sure we have the listening sessions tomorrow and gather in all that feedback as well. So if there, those are the, that point. So why don't I pause to see if there are any additional questions or feedback on that? And then I can get to a couple of the other items that were mentioned.
I do actually have one question. Sorry, I'm looking to, okay. As it relates to technology, and I know we'll speak a little bit more to things later. But in the original, from one of the attachments on our Friday meeting, the 2021, 2022 deployment of devices, there was a paragraph in there where it stated that in the near future, basically around power cords, that in the near future, we would have power cords enough for all of our students and they would be in the classrooms. I was just curious, because the assumption is that this document was created at the beginning of the year. So I wanted to check in on the status of that. And do all of our students have power cords that went home with them in their Chromebooks?
Yeah, I'll have Mr. Baker address that. I think that's number one on the follow-up topics. If that's all right. Great. Any other questions about number three or four? Great. So let me try and address a couple of the additional topics. So the one Director Hoover was just talking about and Director Poe Ryder had mentioned access for families, for all families, chargers, devices, hotspots, and how we're making sure all families have what they need now and in the future. So we do have a process for rolling out that particular technology. And if we have Mr. Baker on, I would invite him to describe that process, how it went, the follow-ups that we had, and any other gaps that we may have seen or experienced yesterday or today.
All right. I'll be, I'll be fairly brief as I know this is a long meeting. So like yesterday, my team provided 870 Chromebooks to elementary school students. These, these Chromebooks were in Chromebook carts with the chargers in the carts long before we decided not to pull the cords out of the cart due to the, the labor required to put them back in. So we purchased additional cords for those Chromebooks. Yesterday, we distributed those cords to the schools for distribution to the students. I, I will admit there was a few hiccups along the way, but I do believe that any, everyone that needed a Chromebook, 90% of the students that needed one to do this work got one yesterday. Today at two o'clock, right before two o'clock, I sent an email to every staff member in the school district and asked them if there were any issues related to technology deployment. Did they know of students who didn't have what they needed? I received 10 emails back from staff, a couple of them were, thank you for all you do, that sort of thing. But there are about eight students that were checking on now. We're looking at their SSIDs and we will be providing those Chromebooks tomorrow to those students as quickly as possible.
I think Mr. Baker also informed me earlier that some students could choose to use their own device and not one of our Chromebooks. So in some cases, a student or a family could say, thanks, but I want to use the device we already have at home. So that's why not every student received a Chromebook if they chose not to. But the important thing is anyone who needed one or wanted one, we want to make sure that we could get them. And I made sure, requested Mr. Baker to make sure to reach out to those families tonight after receiving information back from teachers so that we can get them to them tomorrow morning if they don't have them.
And our preschoolers are outside of that Chromebook thing, right? So there's nothing that hooks our preschool programs back in remotely.
I would like me to speak to that, Dr. Herman, or would you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
We did provide any, any Ecap program that requested Chromebooks. We provided those for the Head Start program. Ms. Chen had, they weren't iPads, but they were, they were another tablet that was deployed to them. She dropped those off at the service center today. My team re-imageed those. They erased and re-imaged them, got them ready for redeployment, and those will be going out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions about device deployment or support?
Are there any devices being denied because they're, according to records, other devices have been checked out? And if so, what is being done to mediate that?
So the protocol for that is students were issued devices last year and along the continuum of distance learning. If we did not receive that device back, we, we asked the, asked the individuals or to return the devices. They didn't get returned. So what we did is we turned those devices off. And now families are either coming to us saying, turn them back on, which we do. Or if they cannot find the device, we make a note in our inventory and we issue a new device to that student.
So they're not being denied. They're, they're getting access to resources that they need.
Yes, yes. We just need to, we just need to, on our part, to put it in our inventory and just make that step. And then we, we, we issue a different Chromebook, yes.
Just wanted to first say thank you for reaching out to teachers today and getting confirmation around where folks are at with technology. I imagine that there are probably some that still maybe either don't know or will likely get to you tomorrow. I know it's probably a hard number to pin down, but I'm just kind of curious around the process for if folks deny the district Chromebook and would rather use their own. Do we track that anywhere? So do we have any idea how many students opt out of the Chromebook? How many students have them? And maybe how many might be lagging in getting that?
There's not a lot of students at home that actually use a device that they have. Based on the figure of 870, we probably issued Chromebooks to 95% of the students today or yesterday. I would have to go back into our data from 1920 and 2021 to give you an accurate answer. I could not do that today. I was busy on some other stuff. I mean, I worked on it, but we didn't quite get it done. I can provide the best kind of information after we do that to you in terms of how many students are using their current, their devices at home that they own and which ones are using our Chromebooks.
Yeah, I think it would be, I think not a lot we can necessarily do tomorrow or the next day. And hopefully we'll be back in, in person soon. But just thinking about, it'd be interesting to gather some information about potentially where the gaps are because we have 1,148 students in elementary. If there were 870 Chromebooks issues, there were 278 students without. So I'd just be kind of curious to know like what, you know, if, whether it's a, it's a communication issue or folks maybe aren't understanding the process or they're just not communicating that they have their own device. Just kind of would be interested in what that information we could gather around that long term to put a really solid tracking system in place.
And what we learned at distance learning the last time was that teachers are really the people, the people on the front lines. If a student isn't connecting, they're contacting my, my department and asking us, does this, does this student have a Chromebook? Do they have conductivity? Do they have this? And we are very responsive to each of the requests that we get from teachers. And that worked for distance learning for the last year and a half. And so we continue to do that. And via this platform, I want every Tuck Willa School District staff to know that if there is not a student connecting and you think that it may be a technology issue, please let us know because we're on it and we want to get everyone connected. But again, the teachers are on the front lines and they really do have the best information about who's connecting and who isn't.
Jeff, you gave us numbers of devices distributed yesterday, but there were already some elementary students who had them, right?
Yes, students that were currently on, on quarantine had those. And we had one, two, three, four, five, six classes that that pertained to across the elementary schools over the, over the course of yesterday.
So maybe that's a discrepancy that currently is finding.
Right. Two, four, six, eight. Yeah, that's about, that's about 130, 140 Chromebooks, yes.
Anecdotally, I'll mention that I walked around Cascade View yesterday at about two or 2:30 and all the teachers were at least expressing that they felt like they had everything they needed. They were thanking you, Jeff. There were a few kids lined up at the office to get hotspots as they were supposed to be. And it looked like everybody was ready to go home equipped with what they needed. So that was good.
Thank you. That was our goal.
Yep.
Yeah, I also feel like our teachers as, as well as our staff have been doing a really good job of getting the word out, like whether you need devices because like all over my Google classroom, my teachers are constantly reminding students that, that there are resources to like for online school, like getting your hotspot as well as getting a Chromebook if needed. And I'm pretty sure the students are well aware of if they need something for online learning.
Good job, tech department.
Yeah, they really worked hard. I mean, they really do and still continue to do.
One of the, one of the benefits from being on remote is that students in quarantine get the same type of education as all the others, which is, which is wonderful.
Mr. Baker, I, as part of continuous improvement and collaboration with community, hoping that there'll be an assessment process that is including where there might be gaps and challenges and where people have had a very difficult time trying to get what they need.
Okay, sure.
Because it, it has been difficult, you know, in terms of level of stress and trying to do a lot in a very short amount of time and, and try to be responsive to student and family needs and, and then to, you know, figure out, well, where can I get cords? Where can I get hotspots? You know, things like that. And so I'm hoping that in a, you know, if we're going to think about a pivot plan between online or in person, if ever need, a need arises again, that there has been some work that has identified what were some of the downsides, what were our gaps? And here's what we're doing to improve for the next time around.
Yeah. One of the big things we did improve from last time was providing one-to-one devices with 612. So they are now take home. And so we eliminated that entire sign-out procedure requesting Chromebook. That, that, that's gone. And so we're looking, we're kind of have those conversations about K5 next, about what would be appropriate.
Anything else on this item?
Just a funny little anecdote. They, I guess there was a word that came down saying, ask your students if they need a hotspot. And the kindergartner, the kindergarten teachers thought that was hilarious. You ask a kindergarten class, how many of them need a hotspot? They're all going to raise their hands. And so there was this imagery of all the kindergartners jumping up and down saying, I want one, I want one. So at least they didn't do that to you, Jeff.
Yeah.
I think I do have one last thing that just came to mind. The, the iPads that we recently approved and are hopefully for the kindergarten, kindergartners, where, where are they in the process? Because hopefully that will also help in the event that we have to
So in terms of the process of the purchase, the PO has been approved. It's been shipped off to Apple. And so I don't have a timeline on delivery, but that part is taking place. The other, the other part of that is we prepared Chromebook carts. We're in the process of preparing Chromebook carts for our kindergarten students. Once the iPads are received, we will take the Chromebooks out of those carts and put the iPads in them. That's where they will charge each day in the classroom. And so when the students come in, the iPads will be ready to go each and every day charged.
Next item?
The next item, question was around athletics and whether or not they're, you know, masking and practice. So the standard for the fall has been, and over the winter, has been that all student athletes are tested three times a week. And both the guidance from WIAA and from King County Department of Health felt that met the standard of creating a safe environment for students because they're tested so frequently. So they, they are not required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status since student vaccination is not a requirement on participation. But the idea is that frequent testing is something that would catch either a positive or students that were asymptomatic. And obviously, if students are exhibiting any symptoms, then they would be tested even if they just, you know, if they had a test Monday, but they were exhibiting symptoms on Tuesday, then we would want to make sure that we test them, pull them out of practice and make sure that we test them.
I'm one of the ones that put the question out there for about athletics. And it really wasn't for me about masking, although I, I have concerns about whether, I believe they should be masked anyway, but that's just an opinion. My concern was that when we were so short on tests, we were using those for the athletes and not for other, for students, for other students. And that felt contrary to our, our purpose. You know, I'm a, I'm an old PE teacher, so I totally support athletics. But it feels like if we're going to close down school, I believe we should close down athletics. And because it gives two messages. It says either those students are less important because we're just going to expose them or those two students are more important and more important than our, our district protocols. So I have real conflicts with us continuing having the athletes practice or even compete. Just an opinion.
So what I would say is I agree. I mean, there shouldn't be a prioritization of testing athletes in lieu of being short of tests. What I will say is we know what the number of student athletes are in the number of tests. And as long as we have a healthy dose of tests, and again, right now, we have 5,000 tests. That's more than enough to meet all the requirements of That's more than enough to meet all the requirements of doing any tests for students or, uh, staff that we would have, plus all the athletes for quite a while. Our typical, um, usage rate at any of the levels, uh, is nowhere close to that for a week. But, um, and I should say, however, uh, the P S C S D now has in stock several tests that we can go over and just pick up. So we also don't have to worry about the supply chain. My goal is to make sure that we have enough tests, uh, for at least two weeks, um, if not more. So the challenge is we can't stockpile tests for too long. We want to make sure they stay fresh enough to be still, eligible to be yielding accurate results, but we should not have an issue of running out of tests again. Uh, and if we do start to come low, um, uh, keeping our schools, keeping tests available for testing symptomatic students, uh, and that we would suspend athletics before we close down schools or if we're running low on tests again. But I don't anticipate that happening.
Um, since the mask, uh, concern got brought up, I'm curious, is there not a mask? Like mandate that our guidance still in place in King County about indoor spaces and vaccinated and unvaccinated people should be wearing masks at all times in indoor spaces?
Unless, unless they're doing athletics, um, they don't, for again, for student athletes, uh, the guidance from King County Department of Health regarding student athletes, that's not a requirement. We're having our nurse, uh, Hannah, and I have a meeting tomorrow morning with King County Department of Health, but I can clarify that. But both the W I A, which is the governing body for athletics statewide, um, and King County Department of Health, that consistently provided that, that guidance for our student athletes.
I think this could be an interesting opportunity to explore is the guidance meeting our needs. Um, and if we've done a pulse check on our student athletes to see, um, you know, are people not coming or not participating because of, um, other folks that are unmasked? Um, uh, has that been done that you are aware of? And if not, is that something that we could potentially do? To make sure that, yeah, that folks are participating who want to participate and not, yeah, maybe we raise our guidance a little bit.
Yeah. So we can certainly, uh, ask the student athletes. Um, so I think most of them feel pretty good about that, but we can certainly get that feedback from, uh, coaches, from students directly and coaches. So the one thing that we did do, um, I think starting in January or even December was when cases were starting to rise, they did, uh, eliminate spectators at sports. Um, because during competition, students were not wearing masks. Uh, all spectators have needed to wear masks all fall. But during sports, um, during the competition, students didn't, were not required to wear masks. But we can certainly call the athletes for sure.
Are we still, um, we have, we have athletes that are doing weight training and that kind of thing, like our football players that are not in their season. So are they getting tested as often when they're in the weight room and that kind of stuff?
Uh, I don't know what the current, uh, weight room schedule is. In-season athletes are tested three times a week. I think if you're not in season, you should be wearing your mask because you're not being tested three times a week. But I'd have to confirm with the high school.
It, I mean, it, it seems funny to me that they're in the building at all when the rest of the people are being asked to stay out.
Yeah, they do. And again, they do have those separate spaces. So we don't, I'll inquire about where that is and just see how students are feeling about that.
Okay, thank you.
I know that there's been, um, information shared out the community, um, and concerns around, uh, student athletes still practicing, not wearing masks, where the rest of the community has had to pause and kind of reshuffle. The other, the other thing for, for students that are in training and utilizing indoor spaces, I know like my kids, for all their P E classes have to wear masks. So I'm just wondering like, what's the difference there? Um, if, if the same spaces are being used by athletes doing training?
Yeah, I think it, uh, some of it comes down to just the size of the teams, especially during the winter. They're definitely smaller, like a basketball team has fifteen people, you can space them out, uh, in the gym. Um, as opposed to some of the classrooms in a smaller gym, especially the elementary schools where you might have bigger numbers. But, um, I can get that justification or the reasons behind, um, in my meeting tomorrow with King County Department of Health about, um, what they felt that guidance, why they were giving that particular guidance. And then I can provide that out.
Anything else? Okay, Dr. Herndon.
Okay, number three was around, uh, contact tracing, um, and making sure that, uh, we are able to follow through with that. Conversations I've had with building administrators and strategies to explore and address this. So this is a really big, um, issue for us. We want to make sure that if we have an exposure or student test positive, that we can do the contact tracing. Um, one of the items that I had mentioned, uh, previously was some of the people who are assigned to do contact tracing were having some of their duties, uh, reassigned to do something else. So, uh, in my conversations with staff this week, I wanted to make sure that they understood that some of these health and safety priorities, the quarantine specialists to connect students, um, to remote learning need to do that. The con, people who are assigned to do contact tracing need to do the contact tracing, not called to do other supervision items because it takes away from the time to do contact tracing. And again, part of the challenge last week was we were down in numbers. So some of the people who were doing contact tracing were out, uh, ill. And then people to cover their work also were out ill. So we were just super short staffed. That led to some of the contact tracing not happening. But I reiterated to staff that the bandwidth that we have, the people who are assigned to do the contact tracing, and some cases I know, um, teaching staff do that, and that's a, a real challenge to them. So we're trying to support them as much as possible. Um, but other staff who are supporting that contact tracing, we want to make sure that's the priority and that their work does not re-prioritize this to anything else. I also invite either, uh, Ms. Jones or Ms. Maestro or head nurse to comment about anything on the contact tracing.
Real quick flip, do we still only have two quarantine specialists?
I believe we have two. We were in process for the third, either Mr. Howard or Mr. Dragunov would know that.
I can answer the quarantine specialist question. We have one that's been hired at Thorndike and one that's hired at Showalter. One that we're trying to onboard, um, and get hired at Foster, who has, I've been identified. And then we have the two other ones that are open right now at C B and at Tuck. Um, and I'm looking for Hannah. I know she's here. Um, so she can talk a little bit more about the, the contact tracing.
I see she's got her hand raised.
Yeah, she either has to be pulled forward to a panelist or allowed to speak.
So, well, uh, could I ask a question? We're waiting on Ms. Maestro.
Yeah, I think Ms. Cor is trying to get her ability to speak here.
I was just thinking about, like, I understand the, um, challenges around last week specifically, um, and staffing and the gaps there. But I'm curious, was contact tracing, um, a challenge prior to that? Or is everything working smoothly up until about the last two weeks?
Sorry if I'm juggling, um. No, it's a, it's a, it's a really good question because I can tell you universally, um, when I'm in, in meetings with area superintendents and even Department of Health, contact tracing has been a struggle all fall. Um, having enough bandwidth and enough staff to do the contact tracing is just, it's really challenging because people, many people are doing it on top of other duties. And there are two challenges around that. One is, you know, it's a workload issue, bandwidth issue, and it starts to lead to people burning out. The other is it leads to delayed notifications. And the key to hopefully, the whole point of the contact tracing was to say, student X, uh, tested positive. Uh, student, uh, X had symptoms on, uh, Monday. We gave them a test. We had the results. Now we do the contact tracing on Tuesday because we have the results so that other people know you were in close proximity or meeting the threshold of being notified of being contact traced, uh, along with staff to say, uh, student X was in your classroom on Monday and they tested positive. Uh, who were they sitting close to going through all those steps in the contact tracing? Which Ms. Maestro could, could mention if we can get her, um, to the speaking portion. But it has been a challenge. So I wouldn't say it was working smoothly simply because there were so much, um, that was happening. There have been, again, some modifications in the contact tracing. The Department of Health prioritized some high priority areas and low priority areas of doing contact tracing. And I believe that was just based on the number of additional positives or exposures using all the data that they had from contact tracing, saying in these particular areas, we've seen additional cases that may result because of that contact in these settings, much less so in these settings. And so that's why they've kind of prioritized some of that. Uh, again, I'll get some additional clarity tomorrow morning in my meeting with King County Department of Health. But in the meetings I've had previously, that's what they were mentioning, um, was that shifting guidance. I think there also, I mean, the, the one thing I do want to say is that schools are, uh, a really safe place for kids. The, the transmission of the virus, um, does not happen frequently at schools. Of course, it can happen because it can happen anywhere, but the vast majority of transmissions happen not at school. Um, so the number of cases to, to trace back to a transmission within school, even in the beginning, in the fall, when we were first starting, many of those first rounds of cases, um, they were not necessarily happening in the classroom or, um, at spaces at school. But because there were so many cases, especially with this particular variant, uh, Omicron, that the transmissibility was much higher. So it was having that contact tracing was important. So all that to say, I think the process we have there, um, was working as smoothly given the staffing and the bandwidth that we had. Also, given the speed with which we get test results. So if we have those tests in school, obviously that helps us too, because someone's symptomatic, we know in fifteen minutes whether or not they're positive. Um, and then we can contact trace a lot faster if we know we have results faster.
Maestro's on?
Great. Hello, yes. Um, so, um, yes, it just what Dr. Herndon was, um, describing. Uh, Ms. Jones described it as a, the perfect storm. Um, it was, you know, between the increase in cases, the changing guidelines at the beginning of the year, um, the lack of staffing. I know about half of our, our health team was out due to COVID, including myself. And, um, oh, and then also the, um, with the holiday, um, with the holidays testing, timelines grew, um, to about forty. So again, notification was a bit tougher. And, um, with the new five day, excuse me, five day isolation guidance, uh, it was, uh, just, I think, a lot of that, kind of contributed to the two or three day, um, contact tracing process. But with all of these new guidances coming out and, uh, with our new, uh, tests coming in, um, we're hoping to kind of, um, improve that process and, um, improve our contact tracing steps. I will say for contact tracing, we do reach out to guardians, um, two ways. We send out a letter which was updated last week. Um, and then also we call the parents. Um, and then that's in that way, um, if we're not able to reach the guardians with letters, we're able to, you know, use translators or, um, answer questions that they may have.
Are those letters, um, printed or are they emailed?
Um, for, it, it depends. It's for high schoolers, they can be emailed. Um, if parents requested, they're more than often printed though. So that way, especially for, um, elementary school students, they're able to give to parents. However, because we found that in the past, it was, um, a bit more, um, it wasn't likely that the, the letters would find their way to parents. That's why we started our phone calls as well.
I, I would really encourage us to think outside the box when we get short-staffed like that. There's a lot of people in the community and I know there's a, there's a confidentiality piece, but there's a lot of people in the community that would step in, former teachers, even school board members, who would step in and help make those phone calls or help make those, you know, whatever. I don't, I would hope that we are not in a position where we're blaming being short-staffed because I've seen our community step up in so many ways that I, I really think there are people out there willing to help that may not be on staff, but could do the job with, with your help and with, you know, the rest of the staff's help. So.
I'm, I've been, um, continually hearing a breakdown, um, and notification and communication with families, not only for students who are positive for COVID, but how are we building trust and communicating and being transparent with the rest of the people in the classroom? So in their families, um, are we communicating and alerting people to, you know, that someone in the classroom has, has, is on, currently on quarantine due to testing positive? Watch out for these symptoms, you know, contact. So, I mean, like, do we have anything, any communication going out that, um, provides our community members the information and resources they need in order to also be able to know what to do next for themselves? And I had shared at the Friday night meeting that, you know, my, my children have been in classrooms where there has been, um, positive cases and not a single thing to this day has come out to me to alert me. It's a, of course, we're going to be careful and keep watching symptoms and things like that, but that's not very transparent. And, um, at that point, the district holds all the power, the information, how we're doing it and not, not letting families in on, on what's happening. And so I would be very interested in hearing, moving forward, how we are being transparent in what we do and how we do it and how more people can know what it is.
So when there is a positive case in a, in a classroom, those template letters go straight to the principal. Principal is to notify, um, the whole school. And so that piece is, you know, is there. There's a lot of confidentiality pieces too with, um, these medical diagnoses and the stigma that goes along with COVID. And so not every, um, child is going to know about every positive case. They, of course, they kind of find out from their friends, um, most of the time, but they certainly, um, when they do the contact tracing and they look at the seating charts, they only look at the kids that are, um, that the teachers report that have been in close contact, uh, for more than fifteen minutes, um, you know, and they haven't worn their masks. Cause they, if they've worn their masks and they've social distanced, many times, um, teachers will say, we did that in our class. We were able to, um, we were able to do those things and so no one is quarantined.
What is meant by the whole school is notified?
An email goes out from the principal to the whole school notifying which class or there's a case. Obviously, when there's lots of cases going on, many, many, you know, throughout the school, again, the principal gets the, is the one that does the notification.
To the school staff? Is that what is meant by to the whole school?
Correct.
Yeah. So the piece that I'm not okay with and I'm familiar, there's other districts that do have principals that communicate regularly with the families to alert just so we know what's going on too. And why can't our families know if HIPAA is being is being practiced? Why can't there be contact?
And I think that's, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that's why we have our chart on the website to show how many classes are in quarantine and then how many cases we have at each school so that the community knows how many cases there are.
And I just would say that's not enough. It doesn't seem to be enough at this time.
I think we can take a look at what we have in place and also kind of learn from some other districts that may be doing some notifications. As a parent myself as well, my student goes to a different high school. I hadn't received any notifications all year. And then I got two notifications in the same day, I think just last week, but that was the first time I had received any notifications as well. And I found that a little hard to believe. But I think we can look to see how we can improve while also staying within the bounds of privacy. So I think, I'm sure we can find a medium there.
Yeah. And always up for suggestions. We'd love to hear it from you guys.
There were examples shared from Auburn School District, Renton School District. I just, I get to hear from, I work with a lot of families in South King County. So I get to hear what's happening in their schools and how principals are communicating, how the district is communicating, how nurses communicate. And so I just would want us to improve our practices.
And I believe what you're also hinting at is the number four, which are some of those tools and letters that go out for notifications. So again, I think Ms. Jones or Ms. Maestro can comment on that. We do have templates and letters and there is a process for that. So if they could highlight that, that would be great.
Well, while they're jumping on, I think I just need to say, like, I I hear 100% the challenges around staffing that is real. It is a big job to do contact tracing. I am, yes, I know firsthand, I sit in a home with someone who works to do that for a large organization. So I understand the burden that it is. And I also understand the ask from community, from teachers. We heard it from so many staff the other day about how they are not even being communicated with when there is a positive case in their class. So what that tells me is that not only are we missing opportunities to contact people who we should, who might be in close contact, but we're also not really even contacting teachers when there's a positive case in their class to be able to do the contact tracing that's needed. So again, like, and I know we, you know, mentioned this on Friday and in some of the emails is that we know that there's a process, but it's really, really not working and people are needing more in the contact tracing area. So I, like Director Bowler Jack stated before, I think we really have an opportunity to figure out how can we get creative to ensure that this gets done because yes, it's hard, yes, it is a burden, but it is incredibly critical that we do it well, or that we do it so that folks can feel safe.
Yes, I don't disagree with that. I agree. It needs to be executed to make sure that people are aware.
Agreed. You have to repeat that question, like the one way back because I'm not sure what it was.
It's just around the tools and letters that are handed out as examples when we are doing the contact tracing.
I know that, yeah, the health team, they have, they have a spreadsheet that they keep because we have to, you know, every kiddo that's positive, we do have to report that. As far as the letters go, I thought we already addressed that, that they're handed out to the families either by email or in person. Once the child needs to quarantine, so they have the date that they should return and then what symptoms to check for and what to do about testing and all of that. And they, you know, use interpreters if they have to call the families. Is that the question? So the really great thing is when the nurses do call and speak to the families, they usually have a lot more questions than just about the positive piece of it. So they get to ask a ton of questions about resources and that's when we really get to shine. We get to talk to the families about all the resources that we have and some things. If they have needs, then we usually end up talking to our social workers and they're so amazing and we can get them the supports they need. I know we had families that needed disinfecting equipment and we were able to provide, I don't know, equipment is the right thing, but sprays and bottles and things to kill those germs in their own homes and we were able to provide that. So it's really great having that personal contact and they're able to ask a lot of questions. And it goes a lot, a lot further than just a letter would do.
Anything else for this item? All right, Dr. Herndon.
Okay, number five, general discussion around the CDC and DOH recent updates. Are these necessary changes to make? Should we use them as a starting place, have a high bar of safety? Additionally, has there been discussion on how the new quarantine timeframe will be implemented, particularly during mealtime? I'll kind of address the first part and then we can have Ms. Maestro talk maybe a little bit about the implementation of the quarantine timeframes. So I do, I do understand kind of that shift in where things are. What I would say is that we have relied on King County Department of Health as our guide in implementation and processes throughout the pandemic. So they make those decisions based on data that they receive, which is a lot. They get tons of data from all sorts of different school districts. And then they took, they also take a look at whatever the latest CDC guidance is. So CDC starts, that's kind of the national frame. Then it comes to the states. State Department of Health for Washington State takes a look at that, looks to see what that may mean for the state of Washington. And then each of the county departments of health look and see what that looks like and makes recommendations. And in some cases, they can actually make directives that we have to follow at that local level because each area is a little bit different. What we may be experiencing in King County could be very different from what's happening in Spokane County or Whitman County or Lewis County. So they are, I have usually a monthly update from them. Last year during the height of the pandemic, it was probably twice a month. So far this year, it's been about once a month at least. I think in December and January, we had a shorter timeframe and turned around with that. So they oftentimes, whenever the new guidance comes from CDC, they take time to analyze and see what the impact is on us based on what's happening on the ground and the latest information, data trends that they're looking at on cases, hospitalizations, all of that. So I know that they do that based on the data and the science. So I would just say, whatever we are taking a look at, I would just want to consult with King County Department of Health to understand from their perspective what that means. I'm not saying that we shouldn't continue to discuss it or see what that is, but I want to make sure that our decisions are grounded in the same kind of lens that we've been using throughout the pandemic because they have been providing us really good guidance. And I know when advisor, any advice or recommendations change, sometimes we don't necessarily know all of the reasons why they may be changing and they might, they do have more insight than I would have. So that's, that's what I would say about that first part. And happy to hear any continued conversation. And then Ms. Maestro can talk about the implementation of the new quarantine timeframes.
I think just, I mean, you probably know way more about anything data related than I do, or even how it all works, you know, data trends and all of those things as it relates to most to anything. But data trends, they lag a little bit, I assume, right? And so if we're thinking about in-person trends, public health, looking at trends of in-person learning, there weren't a lot of schools that were in-person in 2020, 2021. Some came back, especially on, you know, in other parts of the country, participated in some in-person learning. But, you know, we're really looking at data. And again, I know they're looking at that data, but if we're looking at data from September, October, November, and then there's some lagging information. And right now, we're in the middle of an Omicron, right, which is a new variant, which we're seeing different transmission levels in schools and other settings. We're seeing different trends happening now. So that'll be reflected potentially in guidance that comes out in, I don't know, a few months. Maybe not. I don't know. But I guess the idea potentially is that trends might be a little bit behind. And so just because that's the trend somewhere else may or may not be what is in the best interest of our community. And that's why I say using guidance as a starting place to say, okay, this feels, you know, this meets the standard for the state and meets the standard for everything. But we feel that we should have a little bit of a higher standard because our community says that that's what they feel like they want. Our teachers have said that's what they feel like they need. That's my, that was my point in asking that original question.
Yeah. And again, I don't disagree with that. I mean, what's happening elsewhere? You know, what's most important to me, which is why I look at the King County Department of Health COVID website, website data dashboard, is not only what's happening in King County, but also you can drill down to what's happening in Taquilla. And then we're also just looking at how many students are testing positive within our schools. So we do have student staff positivity data that we can look at throughout the fall. And we did see, you know, increases of that happening in December and January. So we do keep track of that. That's the importance of that data on that website as well, about number of positive cases. So if we're seeing that, that's what we would want to be clearly looking at the indicators for. You know, we have more student transmissions happening in school, obviously a big indicator. And that may be different for us than even what's happening in Snohomish County, for sure. Even though we're really close to that, you know, we don't have to look at Mississippi or Colorado or anything like that. I'm most concerned about what's happening here in Taquilla because that's, that's the community that's being impacted by transmission here for sure. So I agree. I just want to make sure that we're understanding what the impacts we're putting on there, the impacts of student learning, the timeframe and the impact on families, obviously health and safety. We want to make sure that we're ensuring that. And I don't think King County Department of Health, you know, hopefully, I don't, I don't believe they have, you know, would make recommendations that they think would be unsafe. And I know you're not saying that. I know not anybody is saying that. We're trying to get to that context that threads that right balance for us. And I would say that if there are students or families, you know, who have the concern or feel that they need additional time, we also want to make sure that we can support them in that if they, if they're not in school, whether or not they test positive or not. I mean, you know, we want to make sure we're able to preserve that learning.
Do we have a threshold for numbers for when we quarantine or when we go online remote?
We do for a classroom. There is a threshold for quarantine in a classroom. Yes.
Do we for the district?
No, we have not for the district. I don't believe there's any district that has, I mean, Seattle put out some numbers, but they just kind of came up with those numbers. I don't know what the science was behind it or what the data was behind it. So they didn't, they didn't put any of those pieces out.
So when we're making the decision of when to go back, what are you basing on that decision?
Yeah, again, I'm looking at the number of positive cases that are happening within the community. Do we have, what's the positivity rate or number of students that are testing positive in our schools or staff? If people are out, do we have substitutes that can cover for that? Do we have all our nurses in place that are able to cover and follow through with all the protocols? And do we have the PPE? Do we have enough tests to be able to respond to see if anyone's symptomatic? Do we have masks? On the PPE side, we do. We have thousands of tests now. We have thousands of masks. So I'm not worried about that. I do want to make sure that we are at full strength for staffing and that's what we've been checking on this week.
So it's going to be interesting to see how data is collected now that we have home test kits to track what strain is being passed around and how many positives we have because they won't be reported. So I'm not sure how we're going to be able to know that in the future as well as.
Yeah. So what I've heard from other districts and the Department of Health is you have to trust your families. If your family say they have a positive, then they have to, I mean, part of that is, you know, trusting our families and our community to be honest about what their results are. If they say they're negative, then we have to believe they're negatives. If they're exhibiting symptoms at school, then we need a test available to be able to test them if we're, if we're seeing symptoms or reporting symptoms.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that if we're using that as a determinant to open school again, we won't know who's out there that's sick. Yeah. One of my concerns is around the protocols and the differing reports we get from what the protocols are as far as paperwork and track tracing and quarantine specialists and all of that, and what's actually happening on the ground. Because it just doesn't seem like we're getting the same reports. So I'm wondering if the district could do a survey of staff, teachers and staff beyond on what they need, what they need to feel secure, what is most important to them. Because I got a lot of different things from a lot of different staff. And I think, I think we could collect some information before that Friday deadline to say, this is what we've got to have in place before we go back. And you've got, you've got teachers that should be able to respond to an email in the next two days. Anyway, just a thought.
And I do, again, I do have a staff listening session at 3:30 tomorrow.
What staff say in a listening session might be different than what they would say.
That's true.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
I guess I'd also wonder, how do families know what to report? So I know that like some, one person in the family is the first person to come up positive. So the whole family stays home and quarantines, then another person gets sick and this happens to be a student in another classroom. Where has there been information that lets the families know that it's wise for you to call the school district and alert us so that we can? I mean, there's, there's no, I'm not aware of anything there. Like, there's a lot of assumptions. And I know that there are family units, family systems, folk that are coming to, that do live together, that are quarantining together because of things like that. And we may not ever know how many positive cases that are students. And we may not ever know how many positive cases that are students. Um, and we've heard from multi-generational families, from staff who also are parents, who also have, you know, there's a lot happening in our district. I also want to do a bit of a time check, so it's about seven twelve now. I want to make sure there's time for public comment as well. So I don't, I just want to check in with you, Dr. Herndon, in terms of the list and where we are in information.
Yeah, so we just, we have this one, which was discussion. And I think there was just one more item about um configurations or structures and uh online learning and meeting.
All right, so is there anything else in terms of thresholds and having clear understanding of what is what we're, what we're deeming appropriate to open versus needing to pivot online?
Yeah, again, for me, it's having the PPE available, tests and masks, because those are the things that prevent transmission at school. Having the staffing available to follow through with our protocols. Um, because those are essential, meaning notification uh and the ability to follow through on testing and contact tracing. Um, and then the ability to have staff to be able to cover, just like we normally would if there were absences. So all of those pieces are the ones that I'm trying to wrap up this week. Um, and um make a, make an assessment, taking in all that feedback and all that information.
Can we also consider the schedule at the secondary as far as the semester and finals?
So, I mean, I can, I can certainly listen to that, although I, I will say that um the uh justifications about pivoting to remote um are really around those health and safety pieces. Of course, I want to hear from staff and, and students about kind of where they think we'll um be able to um meet the needs for next week. But it, I, I mean, it's, it's definitely a challenge and part of a conversation I think we'll be having tomorrow with staff.
All right, let's go ahead and we'll move along to the next item.
Okay, the next one was around if we have uh to either stay in or move back to remote in the future, what creative configurations or structures could be considered to keep young people in the building who really need it? Um, for instance, students of special needs, kindergartners, houseless, et cetera. Um, how can we work on a model for most individuals that doesn't ultimately isolate students whose learning is drastically impacted when not in the building? It's an excellent question. And I think that's something that we have begun some discussion about. Uh, when there was a model that we had in the, when we first came back to in-person learning last spring, uh, which was a hybrid model, but that model does take some time to implement. Um, because you have to determine uh teacher's schedule, who's online, who's not online, how many students are in person. We've seen those uh similar models throughout um that uh in surrounding schools or districts. You know, that there's three things, you're either in person, um, you are remote or you have canceled. And if you're canceling, you're making up uh days later. Uh, if you're in remote and you meet the OSPI thresholds of having seventy percent of your instructional time be synchronous, then you can count that as a day. That was something that didn't exist before when we were all totally remote, before we were in hybrid. So the state did modify that. I think I have seen some conversation, Director Larson may have seen some of this as well. Uh, he may have mentioned it uh previously on the legislative side, which is looking at the state being able to accept instructional uh models that may look different and um difficulties can be punished in either enrollment or portionment. That's not the main driver for us, obviously, we want to be able to deliver quality education to our students. So there has been some initial discussion about what might something else look like uh serving especially some of the students that we mentioned, but also any other students who may want to uh arrive at school. You know, some of the other elementaries, their um absence rate wasn't as high. So that's a lot of families being impacted by being remote this week, who otherwise would probably be reporting to school. So it's definitely impactful to our families to be remote. So we're, we're trying to have discussions about what that might look like as well.
And those discussions definitely need to include the communities most impacted. And so that would be my hope, is that we bring folks into that conversation who have plenty of, I mean, similar to what we've heard so far from our community, plenty of good information to sort of guide and collaborate with to make it happen well.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, it's crucial to get their input on that.
Any other questions on this before we open to public comment? Any final thoughts? All right.
I noticed Samuel muted. I was going to say something, but I didn't.
Go ahead, Director Hooger.
Okay, um, uh, I, I just wanted to name a few things. Um, first off, I appreciate um the extra time and energy put forth by every single person on this call tonight. Um, that includes uh our community members and staff who are here listening. Um, and for the time last night and tomorrow, um, I really appreciated um some of the um uh ownership specifically, um, Dr. Hernan, that you took um on behalf of the district and behalf of yourself. Um, and I think that you made some pretty bold statements around not wanting to scramble and wanting to be in better positions when and if we have to do something next time. And I'm hopeful that all of this information that you've gathered, our conversations tonight, our conversations on uh last Friday, um, we see some actionable plans going, going forward um so that we um uh know um that we can continue to trust um and the community continue to build their trust back in us um as a district. So uh we still have a lot of work to do, um, and I feel a little bit un a lot that's incomplete right now. Definitely feeling pretty unsettled about that, so.
Right, we'll move along to public comments. Um, just to reiterate, if you'd like to provide public comment during the meeting, indicate on Zoom chat by typing your name um that you have a public comment or raise your hand feature in Zoom. And when it's your turn to speak, um, it'll be promoted, have access to do so. State your full name, speak up to three minutes to allow as many people as possible to share. And um it's a turn per public comment, so get. All right, and I see, I see two already. Mary Schultz, Kate Hugo.
Mary Schultz, go ahead. Mary, can you unmute yourself, please? Thank you.
I, I apologize, I, I did not intend to comment.
Oh, okay, thank you. Katie Hugo, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Katie Hugo, I teach first grade at Tuailla Elementary. Um, I spoke last Friday about some concerns I had noticed about contact tracing and just things that were happening in the buildings that people weren't being told about. And I heard a lot just before this about how there is contact tracing and letters are going and parents are being called. Yet, as I said last week, I had multiple cases in my room and nobody was contacted. I only found out because those parents reached out to me because they didn't know who to talk to in the school. I sent those messages forward to the office, to the nurses. And come yesterday, one of those positive families still hadn't heard anything from the district. So I had to be the one, as the classroom teacher, telling them about quarantining and when he should be coming back. That's not my job. That's not my responsibility. And that's putting a lot on teachers when you're making them be the people to give out health information. So not only are we being put in jeopardy, our families, our friends, our students, their families, but then the district's not even doing their end of talking to these people about what's happening. I have one other student who was given incorrect information based on what you guys have shown for your quarantine timeline. So that student came back yesterday when they shouldn't have been, but there were no nurses in the building to check that student, to make sure they were okay. So I just had that kid in my class, unmasked, eating breakfast in the lunchroom, eating with other students that still should have been quarantined. And again, not one single family in my class was contacted about multiple cases. My classroom should have been closed at that point. So I still am a little confused on what exactly the district's doing to help our families, our staff, our students be safe, because I don't feel safe. Thank you.
Give me a hugo. Ms. Hendrickson.
Hi, um, am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Um, I'm Sarah Hendrickson, I work at Thorndike. Um, and I have a lot of the same feelings as Katie. I think she did a really good job of stating a lot of the things that I was going to say as well. And I have a very similar experience where uh just yesterday, I had a student who was in my class who got pulled out to get tested, um, tested positive in my class after um being around all the other kids eating breakfast in the classroom with no mask. Um, and then she just got taken out and sent home. And there was absolutely no word said to me about what to do next as the classroom teacher. And so while I had all my students there, like Katie would says, well, we're working extremely hard trying to do everything else that is our job. I was then in the role of trying to do other people's jobs of I'm calling down to the office, I'm calling down to the nurse. I'm trying to ask for clarification on what should I be doing as a teacher to, like, is my class supposed to shut down? Because last week, we had a fifth grade class that got shut down, the kids got sent home, they quarantined. And they did online instruction. So I called to ask if my kids should stay in from lunch and recess. And I was told, no, it's fine, just carry on about your day, like, it's normal. Um, when last week, we had a class get entirely shut down and sat home and went virtual. So I think that the expectations and what's happening isn't clear and it's not consistent. And then it's putting a lot of extra work on teachers when we are already stretched very thin. Also, with the family notification, there was, I had to go down and specifically ask, can I get a letter for all of my kids? Um, and like, had to go out of my way to get notification to give to my families. And when I got that notification, it was in like twelve-point font, single space, all in English to pass out. And so my frustration grows when I'm listening to board meetings, hearing about being understaffed. And I feel as a teacher, I've been understaffed all year and I'm doing my job every day. And I'm getting things done because I'm going above and beyond and I'm getting creative, like some of the board members are saying, because I feel that that's my job and I have to do that. And I feel that that is the job of the district and the people in charge of this that also need to go above and beyond to get it done. Because if teachers are expected to do that, to do like what we need to do to serve our kids, then everyone needs to be doing the same thing. Or then we're not, and we need to close down if we can't do that. Last week, I lost recess, two, two recesses, right after we got back from break. There was no planning period, there was no ELL services, there was no special education services. So I had all of my kids in my room all day and I had no break besides lunch. And I'm doing my job, so I'm understaffed and overworked. And I'm frustrated to hear that continually be the reason why we can't be safe at work. And I'm even more frustrated that I can't feel safe at work enough to go see family, enough to go see friends and be confident that I know if I was exposed and I know if I was around people who are sick. And I have friends who work in other industries where they know and can stay away from people. If they don't, and it, it's extremely frustrating. I had someone very close to me who lots of you know, who died in October, who I never got to give her a hug in the last few months of her life. I never got to go with her to the hospital on certain days because I didn't know if I was safe. I never got to see her for the last couple of times. And she worked in our district for ten years and I never got to do those things because I didn't know if I was safe, because no one tells us anything. And to me, that's heartbreaking and that's frustrating and I'm really done with it. And it's going to affect teacher retention in this district. And if we are understaffed now, like, we have a fourth grade classroom who hasn't had a teacher since October. I don't know what next year is going to be like if this doesn't get fixed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for the next person?
Go ahead, Kristen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Kristen Theobald, a teacher at Foster High School. Um, I also have, uh, I have a couple of questions and I have a concern about contact tracing. Um, I had a, quite a few instances where a student was at school, like, came to school after a winter break and then suddenly they weren't at school. And I didn't, I got an email from them saying that they weren't feeling well. Um, and then got an email from the nurse, maybe the next week on Monday, saying uh so-and-so has tested positive for COVID, but because they haven't been in school since, you know, last week on Thursday, no contact tracing needs to be done. But I'm like, yeah, but they were feeling sick on Thursday and Friday. And I voluntarily, I'm like, let me know if you want my seating chart, because they were here and then they weren't. Um, but because they didn't test positive until Monday, they are saying that they don't have to do contact tracing, even though that student was just sitting with people in the lunchroom with no mask on, sitting next to people in classes. Um, so I think we're all very confused about like what constitutes contact tracing and what doesn't. I personally believe that we should be erring on the side of caution and contract tracing more than we need to, just to make sure that we're not sending somebody who is potentially infected back into classrooms. So that's contact tracing. Um, I also have a question about students returning from a five-day isolation now that we're going, going by what the CDC says. Are we going to be requiring them to test negative before they can come back to school? Uh, because if not, they could be returning still contagious. And that means that they need an alternate place to eat lunch so that they are not unmasked around other students who are unmasked, if they are still contagious. Um, and then I have a question around masks also, because I know that it was brought up at a previous board meeting that we should be providing KN95 masks, if not N95 masks, to all staff and students. And we received an email today saying that each staff member will receive five masks, KN95 masks, and that we have to ask our head custodian for them. Just another thing we have to ask for, which should just be provided to us. Um, but five KN95 masks is not gonna hold out for the rest of the school year. Under uh all students, elementary to high school, it says disposable, non-medical masks are currently available. It does not say anything about um providing students KN95 masks when we return from remote learning. It says that they are, for all students, are on order and will be distributed when received. We should not be going back into our buildings for in-person learning until we have enough KN95 masks for all students to have multiple, not just one, because we know that they lose them. And then my final, my final point, um, I, I gave all my students a survey on January sixth to kind of see how they were doing. And then I gave all my students a survey remotely um yesterday and today. And the difference between the responses and last week or on the sixth, tons of students were saying, indicating that they were really struggling or they were starting to struggle. And this week, hardly anybody said that they were struggling or starting to struggle. And I think that that is evidence that we did the right thing by going remote at this time because now students aren't stressed out worrying about being in a building that is unsafe. No, they don't like remote learning, but they also don't want to be more worried about their safety than they are about their education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Lavender. My pronoun is they, um, I was a PhD candidate in biology. I have a master's degree in microbiology and I was on the COVID safety team uh for Foster last year. Um, and I just want to push back against this idea that uh for Foster last year. Um, and I just want to push back against this idea that schools are uh especially safe for children. Um, there's nothing special about school that makes COVID transmission any different than any other place. Um, but I want to let people know a thing that I don't think a lot of people know, which is how difficult it actually is to declare an outbreak at school. Um, I read through all of the guidelines from the state last year when I was on the safety team. And in order for something to be declared an outbreak, um, there are two things that have to happen. The first thing is that the student has to infect someone who is outside of their um of their like pod cluster. So if a student comes in and infects every single person in their English class, um, that's not an outbreak. They can infect every single person they come into contact with in their, you know, cohort. And that's not considered an outbreak. The other thing that you have to have in place to declare an outbreak at school is that the two sequences for the student in, in cohort A and the student in cohort B have to be like genetically sequenced and compared to each other. And I don't know how they pull that information, but if we don't even have contact tracing, uh, there's definitely no way for us to inform like the public health department or whatever uh that these different students are in our thing and their, their sequences should be compared. Like, I don't even know how that works, but but I do know that when I looked at the information, it was really obvious that they have made the definition of an outbreak in school so difficult that it is almost n- nonexistent. So, yeah, of course you don't have outbreaks in schools if you're not looking for outbreaks in schools. If you have to um infect somebody who's not in any of your classes in order for it to be declared an outbreak. So I think there are outbreaks that are happening all the time in the sense that we would all understand it, in the sense that people are getting infected with people that they don't live with. But I, I just, I just want to push back against this idea that school is like an especially safe place for students. I've read the science. I don't think it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And um I see that we have, uh, is that one more um public comment? Um, we're past the seven thirty point, so I want to honor um the final comment for the evening.
Go ahead, Emily.
Hi, this is Emily Schwartz. I teach fifth grade at Thorndike Elementary. Um, I had an outbreak in my class last week, and we did immediately go into quarantine because my student had eaten breakfast with their mask off for more than fifteen minutes around all the other students. Um we returned to class yesterday, and as far as I was alerted and based on the questions that I asked the family and the student, there was no negative test um for the student who was the reason that we went into quarantine. And so all day yesterday, I taught unsure of whether or not that student had actually tested positive or not. And um I'm just curious what sort of policy is in place to make sure that we follow up with those students or staff or whomever who uh do end up testing positive because it does create a really unsafe environment to have no clue whether or not someone you know has been positive in the last five days is still positive or not, because whether or not the CDC says you know, five days is enough. Um, we've seen that symptoms and contagion can last for a lot longer than that. So I'm just curious what we have in place.
Thank you. So we are at the conclusion of our meeting for the night. I just want to open it up to the board members if there's any final thoughts before we adjourn.
Um, I would, I would just like to say something. I feel like I agree with our staff because I feel like contact tracing is something that I feel like hasn't been addressed or communicated with families, because I'm pretty sure that I've been in contact with someone who's had COVID because there has been so many cases, but I don't think my parents have ever been contacted, or I have been contacted about contact tracing, or that I was in contact with someone that has COVID, or yeah, and I feel like we as a district should work together to maybe hire more people to work on contact tracing, because I feel like us students as well as staff wouldn't feel safe if that important information isn't being communicated with our staff as well as our parents and as well as the students. And yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fia Pito. Any final thoughts?
I want to thank again everyone for um first, for joining us again this evening for yet another opportunity as um was just pointed out in the chat. Um, thank you so much for your feedback, your thoughts. Um, I know I'm new and I personally uh am so committed to working together as a team to really address and, and support um the district and, and supporting you all better and supporting the community and our students better. Um, I, uh, yeah, so I just want to again, thank you, and I look forward for the work continuing um because it needs to for sure. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I too want to say thank you for all the input and the clarification that you're giving us about what's really happening in the buildings and what needs to happen to make you all feel safe. I see that Naisha has a question that hasn't been answered. The question was, can we, can the health department send someone out to address the board of directors' questions? Um, I don't know if uh, if somebody wants to answer that for Naisha or get back to her at a different point, but wanted to make sure that we saw that question. And I thank you for, for sharing with us again tonight.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you to everybody who took time to be here tonight and express concerns and um offer additional things that we need to be, have in place and information we need to know in order to be safe moving forward. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.